Okay, good evening commissioners, this is an orientation meeting of the planning and zoning Commission with our Council for Proposals, we have Pete Gilderman and I will be at handouts for Pete and Ira. Sorry, I missed what I wanted to say as well. Gentlemen, Lord George.
Okay, I guess I'm gonna start and so I don't need to introduce Pete or Nick, but I wanted to have our full team here and Nick in particular, perhaps some of you don't know him as well, but he's an important part of our team and he's gonna focus a little bit more towards the end on some of the remote meeting issues that are now very important and he spent a lot of time on it. I hope you have had a chance to at least, at least look at the outline that we sent out. I'm gonna follow that. I'm gonna try to anticipate, you know, the most important concerns which usually deal with conflicts and bias and predetermination and executive sessions and issues related to those topics. And I may skip over some of the other ones just in the interest of time. Then we'll get to the remote meeting part of it. I think we can keep this fairly informal and by that I mean that if you have a question, I, you know, just sort of, I think you can just kind of interrupt and we'll try to answer the questions, although I would like to try to cover most of this if I can in the one hour that we have. And Pete and Nick will just interject their thoughts also as we get through this. So I'm gonna follow the outline and try to, try to highlight some of the things. The first thing I was gonna tell you is that the three of us are here to assist and I think and hope you know that. We're available to answer questions. If you do have questions, legal questions, concerns, it's always best if you channel those either through John as the chair or, or through Lynn or ideally, I guess, through both and then they can contact us and we can help answer your questions. A few preliminary topics here, I'm just gonna cover quickly. The concept of notice, it's in the outline and the only thing I'll just say is that it's very important, it's actually critical that we stick with proper notice in accordance with statutes. Failure to have proper notice can be, you know, fatal defect jurisdictional defect. So we spend great time and Lynn spends great time trying to make sure that all notices are proper and all timelines, time limits are properly handled and we're here to help on that too. And often we do review the different kinds of notices. Time requirements, the only thing I'll say on this is, well, let me, let me start by saying every application has a time limit. And generally, it's not something that commissioners have to be overly concerned about in terms of counting the days or anything like that because that's really Lynn's job and she does a good job at that. So, but you should certainly be aware that there are statutory timelines associated with all kinds of applications. So for instance, a site plan application must be decided, decided within 65 days after receipt. And if you do not do so, then a site plan is automatically approved. So that one in particular, you have to keep, keep an eye out front if you have a site plan alone. Most of the time, for most applications, variances at the ZBA level, et cetera, we have the 65, 35, 65 deadlines, basically meaning that once an application is in and accepted, the hearing has to open in 65 days, it has to be completed 35 days after that. And then you have 65 days after the hearing is closed to render a decision. And there are extensions that can be given for all that. So that's, that's kind of just a quick overview of the deadlines, as long as you're aware generally that, you know, we can't, we can't wait all day on applications. It's governed by statute. We're gonna talk about, a little bit about meeting procedures and in particular, focus a little bit on the hybrid meetings and remote meetings. We'll get to that at the end. So I'll defer discussion on that. But let me jump to something which does come up quite a bit and that's conflicts of interest. So when you have an application, when you're reviewing anything, each one of you has to decide whether you have a conflict of interest, which could disqualify you from participating. Generally, those are either personal or financial conflicts. Those are the two broad categories. And the question then becomes, you know, what, what is a conflict? What is a personal interest? There are statutes here that, that govern. I've cited them in the outline, eight dash 11, eight dash 21, certain other statutes for wetlands commissions. There are cases that talk about this. These are individual decisions that you have to make. Nobody can really legally tell you to get off the commission for something. It's, it's really up to you. But if you make the wrong call, then you can jeopardize the entire commission action. So it's best to err on the side of, you know, not participating if you think you have a conflict. What constitutes a conflict? What kind of a relationship would be, would be a conflict? Their judgment calls in a small town like New Canaan or any of the surrounding towns, you're likely to know a lot of applicants. And then it depends really on the extent of the, of the relationship. So in the outline, I have some obvious examples. If somebody that is in business with you formally or informally comes before you, that's, that's a relationship where you should get off. If you have an ongoing personal or business relationship with somebody, an ongoing business relationship, for instance, then I would suggest that you not participate because there would be a personal conflict of interest. And don't forget, it's not always an actual conflict. It, it can be the appearance of conflict, which in our legal world is just as important. So, so how someone views it can be equally important from a legal standpoint, not, not just the actual relationship. Certainly someone who's a relative, you know, I mentioned business partners, relatives, relationships like that obviously are pretty obvious.
And Ira, at least one case has held that if, if you have an attorney, a personal attorney, and he appears in front of you on behalf of an applicant and he's your attorney, that's a conflict. So, or, or for example, if you utilize someone, an engineer or another, an architect or somebody who comes before the commission and that's your person, you know, you utilize that person for your own purposes, that's probably a conflict. So gotta be aware of things even, you know, kind of that remote.
Yeah, yeah.
This is, this is Dan Radman. So I've got a question on behalf of myself and Kent and we're both architects. We both work in town. I work with a number of professional consultants in town, civil engineers, structural engineers, surveyors, et cetera, on numerous projects. Does that mean I have to recuse myself from every application that they're involved with?
No, no, not necessarily that. But if they are, if they are your consultant or expert, for example, on a, on a personal project that you're working on, then you have to be very careful. Obviously.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
It's never a bad idea.
I do work with them.
You mean from a business standpoint, as opposed to they're working on doing some for your, your home, let's say.
Oh, I see. Okay.
I think that's what Pete was trying to say. I, these are always. I, I would say, and you know, these are a little bit judgment calls. I mean, that's, that's probably a close call, Dan, to be, to be honest. I guess it depends on kind of the extent of the relationship or how close or how often or if you've got 10 projects going with some engineer at once and then that engineer appears before you, I don't know, that, that could be, that might be enough to say you should not participate in that particular application. It's kind of a judgment call. It is a judgment call and a matter of degree, but those are the tricky ones. They're always tricky when, when there's a, a professional in the community, you know, someone who builds homes, who's on a P and Z or ZBA. And these are, these are tricky questions and there's no, there's no black and white answer. They're, they're fact based, I would say.
Sometimes the answer is to disclose the fact that you do work with that individual and then indicate that it won't affect your ability to be fair and impartial. Judges sometimes ask lawyers that question when there's a potential conflict with a judge. You know, will it, will it affect your ability to be fair and impartial? Now, having raised it, you then create the potential appearance of a conflict. So, but it's always better to, as Ira mentioned, err on the side of, of being a little bit conservative there. But you can certainly explain the fact that you have done work with Joe Blow and, but that, that work is not gonna affect your ability to be fair and impartial with respect to a given application. But again, as Ira said, it's, that's, that's a tricky one. On the other hand, on the other hand, you know, experts, people with, with some expertise on the commission is usually a good thing. So it's, it's a balancing, it's balancing.
Yeah, and you can make, you can make all kinds of arguments that you know the consultant, you, you know the quality of their work, you're able to assess it. I mean, you can make a case and, you know, so.
Hey, Ira, Dick Ward has a question.
Yeah.
What if you, an engineer disappeared before the commission, but you have used that engineer in the past? They may not have a current relationship and it may have been two, three, five years, but you've used for personal project.
Yeah, I think that's okay. You mean like they did something for your home or something personal? You mean, that's what you mean for, for personal?
Yes.
Yeah, that, that would not typically bother me. You know, again, it's, it's a small town and people know each other and there's a limited pool of experts. And so you're, you're bound to have those overlaps where, yeah, I used this engineer in my own house about two or three years ago or something. But you have no ongoing relationship and it was kind of a, you know, a single thing perhaps. So, so that, that would be fairly clear to me that there's not a conflict. If it's the ongoing and it's, it's, and then the degree of it, perhaps, perhaps the number of projects, these are all variables that I would think about.
The other area that perhaps we would run into being in a relatively small town is if an applicant is perhaps a member of the same club.
Yeah. Yeah, that was kind of one of the things that I sometimes say here. They go to the same club or, you know, or you, you know, you played golf with them a couple of times over the years. You're gonna have those kinds of relationships. A restaurant owner that, you know, yeah, I know the owner, he wants to expand. I go, I go there, you know, we go there a few times a year, that kind of thing. That's gonna happen. And to me, that doesn't, that doesn't cause for, it's not a ground for recusal, I would say. Now, if this is your, you know, one of your regular foursome, you know, every Saturday for the whole golfing season and it's one of your closest friends and you socialize with them and spouse, that's probably a different story. Then you do have a personal relationship. If it's your closest friend, for instance.
Ira, please. Kent Turner, I just have a question.
I'm sorry, it's fading on me.
Yeah. That some of the commissioners have to have.
I think I'm losing that Kent. Can you?
Kent, I think, I think Kent, you need to speak into the mic a little more directly.
Can you hear me now?
I think a little better, yeah.
Okay. I'm talking about a couple of situations where some of the commissioners have had to recuse themselves because of the proximity to one of the institutional institutions in town. Mr. Ward, myself and our, you know, John have had to, or they did recuse themselves. And I'd like to, if you could just address, is, was that because it was the appearance of a conflict or was there some kind of pressure that created that, that situation? When, when do you really have to recuse yourself?
Well, I, I mean, my standard would be, is it going to be raised in some court proceeding and could it jeopardize what the commission does? That's kind of the standard that I look for. I mean, I'm not necessarily counting how many are on one side or the other, but yeah, I mean, if you live next door to place and they're building a large addition right next to your house and it's gonna block your view and, you know, come up with all kinds of facts that really sounds, it sounds terrible, then there probably is conflict. Now, you can, you can, you are entitled to protect your own property interests. That's different from, but that, but that would be after a recusal. So that's a related topic, but as commissioners, you don't give up, you know, all your property rights, but, but you may be giving up, you may have to give up your right to sit on that application. So that's, those are, those are tricky cases. How, how far, you know, your three houses down or you're on the next street, you know, then, then it's, again, I keep using the same phrase, it's, it's a judgment call, but it's, it's, if you're gonna be affected directly, let's say by, you know, traffic problem, even if you are on the same street, but not immediately adjacent, then there could be an actual conflict. It could, it could impact your property, your property's value, or it could be an appearance also of conflict that someone's gonna say, well, you know, Smith over here, obviously he doesn't like this project because he or she lives too close. So that's the theory. That's how I look at it.
This is John Cris, one of the commissioners, I have a question. I'm on a board and get to deal with conflict issues on this board. And we were advised that if someone is accusing her herself, the person should actually leave the room during the discussion. The argument for that is that the person is sitting elsewhere in the room away from the board table, person can send signals, make faces or somehow take a crush, try to sway people on persons outside the room, persons outside the room. What are your thoughts on this?
Yeah, I agree a hundred percent. And that, that's what we always say. If you're going to recuse yourself because of the conflict, then you should leave the room or at a minimum, sit, sit in the back. And just for that reason, perhaps it strikes some people as kind of bizarre, but that, that, that has happened and that's the reason. If you sit in the front row and, you know, you could be with the eye rolls or making a face when you hear something and, or whatever. So, and your colleagues can pick up those signals. So that's exactly what we generally say. Leave the room. If it's a big room, you wanna sit in the back, I guess that's, that's probably okay.
I would also think though, if one is accusing oneself but wants to speak, because as you've mentioned, you don't give up your rights as a citizen.
Well, I, again, just so I'm, I'm clear on that. I, I don't advise that you, you just routinely, you know, if you have a conflict, I think you generally should not speak either, with the exception being if it, if it clearly affects your, your own property, then you do have a right, I think, to, to say something. From time to time, I've said, well, to the commissioner who's accusing himself or herself, well, how about, how about your spouse? You know, keep it one, separate a little bit. Can your spouse get up and say, I'm opposed? Do you have a neighbor on the other side who's, you know, gonna equally, can equally make the same argument? You know, maybe there's a lawyer that you want to hire or something like that. So you do have a right to protect your property, but, but I wouldn't routinely just get up and say, here's what I think. That sort defeats the purpose.
So in this age of Zoom, if you're accusing yourself, is the person required to log off during the discussion or go turn off audio and turn off video?
Yeah, that's, that's come up off and on. And I think, yeah, I think either turn, turn your, you know, your picture off or, you know, sort of leave, leave, you know, don't sit in front of the camera and just go get something to eat or something. But for the same reason, you could be sitting there, you know, giving some sort of signals by your gestures and things of that nature.
Either of those solutions would be acceptable.
In terms of recusing for a Zoom, I, I, I think so. I mean, it's, it's a new world and it hasn't come up a lot in my experience the last, you know, year and a half, but that's what I would say. I think, I think once or twice and that's what I said, just, yeah, the person just either, you know, logged off or, or at a minimum, you know, went away from the camera. I think as long as your face is not there, you're not speaking, that would do it, seems to me.
That's what I've seen, that's what I've seen in practice, Ira. I mean, there's nothing under the new legislation that specifically speaks to that in terms of remote meetings. But yeah, in my experience for remote meetings where there's been a recusal, someone has either turned off their screen and audio completely or just gotten up and left from the view of the camera and that seems to have worked effectively.
Yeah, the main point, one of the main points here is that if you make the wrong call, then the, any appeal is gonna be addressing that kind of an issue rather than the substance. You know, you work so hard to get the substance of a decision correct. And then if one person just, you know, decides to sit, sit and perhaps they shouldn't, then that becomes the issue and that could, that could hurt the case. I was gonna tell you just, it's a little out of, out of date now, but one of the original conflict cases that we talk about at these seminars occurred in the late 1940s. And the husband was the commissioner and his wife was the applicant. And he sat through that, through that proceeding, hopefully voted in favor of what she wanted, but the court said that's not a good idea. So we, we use that as our first, first known example of a conflict and hopefully people know better than to do that nowadays. And the last thing I'll say, and Pete alluded to this, is if you're going to recuse yourself, I, I think it's better to say something or I guess you could write something, but give some sort of reason, as opposed to just not, not being there. So that's my feeling. You know, to avoid the appearance of conflict, I've decided I won't participate. You don't have to get into a lot of detail. And also keep in mind that sometimes there is public pressure and there is, you know, there's an applicant or supporters of one side or the other who will say, you know, Mr. Smith here shouldn't, shouldn't participate because he's got a conflict. And you gotta decide what you're gonna do about that and how you're gonna handle it and what you're gonna say. So, but I think it's better to say something, even if you don't accept the allegation, but to say, to, to avoid any side issues, distracting issues. And I don't wanna jeopardize what the commission is doing here because they're working very hard. I'm gonna step aside. Okay, bias and predetermination are two, also two important concepts. They're different. They're not based really on statutes, but they're, they're based upon case law, basically. Predetermination is, is a finding that a member of the commission has made up his or her mind and essentially decided the application beforehand for the public hearing. And how is that, how is that done? It's, it's done usually by statements that are made. In the earliest version of this outline, it was, you know, letters to the editor, but, but nowadays it's more through social media. It could also be done just, you know, I suppose in conversations with people in the community. So there are other ways, but anything where you've predetermined, you've made up your mind or it sounds like you have made up your mind, will, will allow for a charge of predetermination. And usually what happens is the, the applicant or the lawyer for an applicant will stand up and say, you know, Mr. Bloom has, has written several Facebook entries in support of this project or against this project. And I think he has predetermined it and I asked that he recuse himself. And often that happens at the beginning of the meeting if you've, if you've put out those statements. So again, it's a problem. It can, it can jeopardize what the commission is doing. Social media seems to be irresistible to some people and we have some other towns where it has come up and some members of some boards and commissions just can't control themselves basically, but they have to. And what I say is that, you know, you're privileged to be on a planning and zoning commission and you have certain rights when you sit at the table, so to speak, that others in town don't have. And that's where you exercise your, your judgment and make your decisions. But what you do give up is the right to just kind of, you know, say whatever you want at any time and any place. And that's the reality of it. So people who go onto Facebook all the time and say one thing or another are gonna, they're gonna be looking for trouble. So I would be very careful. And similarly, we're in towns that have newspapers and legislature editor. It's kind of, it's kind of the same, same thing. Predetermination is, is where you have made up your, you know, made up your mind. That's the accusation. Bias is, is kind of just a little different. You've shown some dislike perhaps for the person. It's usually, I think, a negative bias. You know, again, it could be through your statements. It could be from the fact that you had a lawsuit with somebody, a bitter lawsuit. And so it's clear that you're biased against the person. So these are, these are all things to consider. Not, not every comment you make will, will be sufficient to cause a recusal. So, I mean, certainly the law is, I think, fair about that. We all say things and, and once in a while, you know, you'll say something, you'll be confronted with, with that and you'll just have to say, well, I did say that, but you know, that was a while ago and now I'm here and I'm gonna listen to the evidence with an open mind. I know I have to do that and that's my job. And sometimes that'll take care of it. So.
So, question.
Yeah.
James Bash, question. I'll just give you an example. So it was on Friday, it was at a New Canaan advertisers sponsor coffee.
Yeah.
Commissioners, it was John Cris, myself, were asked to recap where the marijuana amendment, essential amendment is in regards to P and Z. And I did not make a comment on it, even though it's not a specific application, it's a general rule. And what I was asked for, John was asked for was just to recap where things were at as opposed to actually give a specific opinion on what should happen. Can you comment on that and give us a little more of an elaboration of what's said or not said, what's appropriate, what's not appropriate in that situation?
Yeah, I mean, first of all, it's a, it's a legislative act. If you're talking about a text amendment, so I think to that extent, it's, it's a little bit different, I think. You, you can certainly. You you can certainly summarize it, you know, I mean, yeah, we're going to consider it, you know, Thursday or Tuesday or, you know, the 31st. And you know, if you're, if you know what's happened throughout the state, you know, I'm for, I suppose you could say that too, facts. You know, we're aware that, you know, six surrounding towns have done this or that. And we have a proposal before us similar to what was done in Westport and Wilton or whatever. I mean, I suppose you can give some factual information like that. And it is a legislative act. But I suppose you still want to keep an open mind. You may hear something at the hearing that may convince you to change your vote. So I think you have to be careful. There's probably just a little more leeway with that kind of thing. But at a minimum, you can give some basic factual information about the law that was passed, what the options are for the town. If there's a specific text change before you, which I think there is, because I think Nick wrote it, then I think you can reference that. You guys have any other thoughts, Nick or Pete on that?
No, I think that's exactly right. I mean, I'm not sure the level of detail that was being requested, but yeah, I mean, there this is an act. There are certain options that municipalities have. This commission is aware of those options based on a presentation I gave whenever it was last month. And if the questions are geared toward the specific amendment that is eventually getting to this board, and we're going to talk about it later today. Then, yeah, like I ever said, I think you can describe what that might look like. It's a public document anyway. It's part of this application packet, but without necessarily speaking to which way you might be feeling or which way you might be voting. Because there hasn't been any public hearing yet. Your opinion may change. So with that in mind, yeah, I think you give a status update to the tune of, well, yes, we have an amendment that's pending and will come before us. It would prohibit or at least contemplates prohibiting most, if not all, of the potential cannabis establishments under the new law. And we'll see what happens, that that sort of thing. I think that would be okay.
Yeah, I would just stop as Nick just said, if they, the next question, well, how are you going to vote on it? And then I would say, well, you know, I want to hear what people have to say before I make any commitment. So I'm just trying to keep a little eye on the time to get through enough of this by seven. I assume it's kind of a hard stop at seven. So let me skip to a few things that seem to generate controversy. But, you know, were there any more questions on that, those topics?
All right. Chris Herring here, one of the commissioners dialing remotely. Just on the on the affiliations and the clubs, I was thinking about a scenario where, you know, say you contribute to, you know, one of the nonprofits in town and the nonprofits then put forth something, you know, whether it be a church or whether it be, you know, how sort of arms length does that need to be? So you can a community foundation or is that is there precedent for that?
Well, you know, that I keep saying the same thing. I'm sorry. I was going to say that's tricky that. But I could think of someone, I can't name names or even towns, but right now that situation in another town where someone on the planning and zoning commission made a donation. I don't know if it's substantial or not. I'm going to guess it's, you know, substantial. And and now that entity is coming forward with a project, he decided to recuse himself. So you know, it's a judgment call. If you sent $25 five years ago, then not a big deal, right? If if you just sent in, you know, a $10,000 donation. And if it's if it's especially for some, you know, expansion project, then you probably just caused yourself recusal.
Okay, thank you. And it sounds like just the the commentary around that. So like if there is a testimonial that you're donating this for X, Y, and Z, obviously that sort of adds fuel to the fire. Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, if it's sort of unrelated, you know, an unrelated donation and it's sporadic and it's some sort of modest amount or, you know, I think I think you probably can get by. But if, you know, if it's a regular kind of thing, every year you've sent in something significant and it's earmarked for certainly if it's earmarked for that particular project and you donated for the project, some expansion of a religious organization facility, let's say, then I think you probably should recuse yourself.
Okay, thanks.
Site visits. These seem to generate a lot of controversy, but but it's it's the law is simple, maybe implementing is not so simple. Site, as a group, you have the opportunity very often to do a group viewing of the property. We call it a site visit. It's it's should be noticed as a public meeting. The public has to be allowed to attend. What happens if the owner says, well, I don't care, a commission can come, but no public? Then what I say is, well, then we're not doing a site visit. You don't want to do it the right way, the legal way. If the owner says that, then the commission's not coming either. And that might be good, that might be bad for the property owner. Usually they acquiesce. If we like to say there's no talking on the site visit, except questions dealing with sort of your orientation on the property, like, you know, that fence is at the property line or something like that. That that's that's fine. And whoever is giving the tour, so to speak, sometimes will point out those kinds of landmarks. But it's best to hold your questions for the meeting, you know, either in the meeting room or on Zoom like this, so everybody can hear it. And so we suggest that there be minimal discussion. Not sure that is the reality in a lot of these visits, but we try to suggest that the public can come along, they tag along. And we suggest that they not speak at all, but it happens. And hopefully it's the same type of questions. And everything else should be saved for continuation of the public hearing at some later date. So those are the sort of the simple rules, but they're important rules, I think, for site visits.
And also, Ira, if there's a quorum of the commission present at a site visit, it needs to be noticed as well. Notice of eating has to occur the same way a notice of any public meeting needs to occur.
Yes, yes, absolutely. I meant to imply that, but yes, absolutely. The record, I just want to sort of emphasize, the record is, you know, the compilation of all written reports, comments, testimony, ultimately the transcript, exhibits, maps. I mean, all of that is what we call the record, and it all has to come in before the public hearing is closed. Once the public hearing is closed, you can't, you can't add documents. So it's important because people don't always adhere to that and they, you know, they try to add something or letters will come in after it's closed. And if it comes in, then they have to, we tell usually the planners, well, put them in a different file, you know, post hearing letters, but it's not part of the record. And similarly, if you get emails from people after the hearing is closed, then I guess you should probably do the same thing. Maybe send them to Lynn and say, this came in after, put it in some sort of post hearing thing, just a place to put it, frankly. But it's not part of the record and really shouldn't be considered. And that raises another question of, you know, what do you do if you just get the email? Or a letter, if anybody mails letters anymore, but, you know, someone writes one of you because they know you, so they write you an email to your personal email, let's say. I I think the best thing to do is to share it with with Lynn and and then Lynn should put it, make it part of the record and share it with the rest of the commission. So don't keep it to yourself because it may say something that could influence you one way or the other, maybe inaccurate. So everybody should have a chance to see the same information and evaluate it.
Ira, does that apply for written correspondence as well? Because I received a letter on the library application from some person I did not know in the mail. Same type of thing?
Yeah, 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 I'm talking mostly about, yeah, emails, written, yeah, letters. Right. I mean, you're probably going to open it. You're probably going to read it. I mean, why not? And then I would then get it to the office and it'll become part of a record. And however it's disseminated, everybody should probably see it. You know, in the old days, people would have to come to the planning and zoning office, you know, before the meeting and sit there and go through letters and kind of see them. But I think that stopped a few decades ago. So however, it's it's disseminated to the rest of you that that should happen too.
But you're talking, Ira, just to be clear about items that are received prior to the close of
Yes, I'm sorry. Yeah, I meant prior, right. If it comes after, you know, I mean, it's as far as I'm concerned, I guess you could probably just just put it aside for yourself. I mean,
It's nothing.
So it's nothing. Don't even read it, frankly.
Right. If you can avoid it. The only thing that you can get after the close of a public hearing is technical advice from staff or our office, for example, can be received and becomes part of the record after the close of the public hearing. If it's technical in nature, like you don't understand something that was said and you ask for some advice, you can get that from a from a staff person or a town attorney, not from an outside source, not from, you know, an engineer that you happen to know and you ask him for an opinion, that that can't be done. But if you have some technical confusion and you need it to be straightened out, you can ask Lynn, you can ask us. You could ask the town engineer, but that's about it. And that's not to get new information. That's only to to clear up something that you're not certain about.
Yeah, and look, I agree 100% because that's what the law says. However, I always worry about having to write something after the public hearing is closed because I worry that it sets sets us up for, well, you you put some new information to your opinion somehow. So if possible, get your questions out to us or to Lynn or the town engineer before the public hearing is closed, I would suggest. It's not always possible. You may not have thought about the issue until you're sitting down to deliberate after the public hearing is closed. But at least if we submit something while the public hearing is open, the applicant or someone else, an intervenor, somebody will have a chance to read it. So that's how I think about it. It's not always possible to do that, but keep that in mind at least. The something else is important here. I'll just mention when a commission member, so on the record, let me just conclude by saying once the record is closed, it's closed. And that includes site visits. Anything that you may want to do on your own, you know, you decide, well, I'll Google, I'm going to Google something that came up. And and you print out, you know, pages or send them to everybody in commission. You can't do that stuff. The record, the record is closed. You can't go back to the site and take pictures and tell everybody or show them your camera, your phone. I mean, you just can't do that stuff. It's it's closed. So please, please keep that in mind. When a commission member intends to use his or her own expertise or personal knowledge of a site as a basis for a decision, he or she should disclose that expertise or knowledge during the public hearing. So if you are particularly familiar with something because either you've had some training perhaps as as an engineer perhaps or whatever, and you're going to, you want to offer some comments, do it at the public hearing. Explain the basis for it. You know, I had some training, I worked here, I did this. Or I, you know, I've been to the site 1,000 times and what I've always seen is such and such. But disclose the basis for your thoughts and opinions at the public hearing. That's important to do. This ties into what we were saying before about about not making inappropriate comments, but but there's a little lesson here, which some people learn the hard way. When you take a break during the middle of a hearing, this is when we're live and there's people sitting there, you have to be a little careful too about what you say. People would go out into the hall, men's room, the ladies' room and start chatting. And you do have to be careful what you say. Someone may say, oh, that last that last expert, boy, what a moron. You know, and you don't want to say, I agree or anything like that. So you got to be careful about those kind of conversations. Actual or perceived, because people will look at the tape. And so I could see right here on the video, I could see, you know, the whole room almost. And and someone could see, you know, a commissioner talking to the applicant and wonder what's going on. Now, you may have been talking about the Yankees or something, but they think you're talking about the application. So you risk being unfriendly, but I suggest you try to to do do it that way and not not be too friendly. Post hearing information shouldn't be included. We covered that already. Protest petitions, I'll just just say very quickly. Sometimes a group of residents can lodge what's called a protest or protest petition with the commission protesting a proposed zone or regulation change. And if they do that properly with the requisite number of signatures, then a two thirds vote of all the total authorized number of commissioners is required. So it raises the bar for those kinds of things if they can come up with the right petition petition. But it does require you know, a fair number of people. The petition has to be signed by property owners of 20% or more of the area of lots included in the proposed change or of lots within 500 feet in all directions of the area in question. So they would come in with this petition signed and then it requires Lynn probably to to go through to see if it qualifies as a proper petition. And then the standard for your vote goes up to that two thirds level. Quickly on executive sessions. Generally, you will be meeting, as I think you are tonight, in executive session to talk about pending litigation. So pending cases, when we notice it, you're supposed to put the case. So the name of the case is public. That's what the Freedom of Information Commission has said. When you go in executive session, everything is strictly confidential. There can be no discussion discussion outside that room of what occurred. No voting is allowed. You can only discuss. You can't vote in executive session. You can invite guests. So tonight you'll invite Pete in as a guest. And he can then talk to you in executive session. So that's basically how that works. I'm just worried we're going to run out of time and I do want to talk a little bit more about remote meetings because I think that's probably a little more topical and important. So why don't I skip the end here? I had a couple more topics, but Nick, if you want to just take it, take some time here before we run out of time.
Sure. All right. Thanks, Ira. Good evening, everyone. Again, Nicholas Pomanti. So as we all know, last year, we started holding these remote meetings as a result of several of the governor's executive orders. And those orders effectively at the time became the law and dictated how we could or could not hold remote or hybrid meetings. However, as of July of this year, those executive orders have now expired. And at this point, we're actually operating under actual law that was passed by the legislature and became effective on July 1st. And that law has slightly different requirements and obligations on the town compared to what we were doing back in the midst of the pandemic. So to summarize the highlights, we have the ability, but are not required to allow the public to attend meetings remotely or a hybrid combination of remote and in person. So we have the ability to to offer attendance in in some remote capacity. We are required to allow you as commissioners to participate remotely if you choose. Although this was always allowed to some extent. if you choose. Although this was always allowed to some extent under existing Freedom of Information Act law. Now, under this new legislation, we are obligated to allow remote participation for our commissioners upon request. That same obligation doesn't extend to the public. If the public says, oh, I want to attend remotely, that's not what the law says. If we do have remote, I, I just want to be clear before I get into the meat of, of this. If we do allow, have a meeting where it's basically in person, but a few of our commissioners participate remotely, that does not trigger these new procedural requirements that I'm about to summarize. Only if we extend the ability to the public to attend remotely in some manner, are we now bound by these new requirements? So what are they? Well, the notices for regular meetings, so meetings set at the beginning of the year, those have to be posted 48 hours prior, not 24 hours prior. So there's an additional day now that we have to get our notices and agendas squared away and properly noticed to comply with FOIA law for a remote or a hybrid meeting. Again, that's what I'm talking about. These apply to remote or hybrid meetings. For special meetings, the notice obligations, the timing on notice doesn't change. We're still looking at, we need 24 hours notice before a meeting. Our notices need to include instructions for remote access. If we are allowing the public to access remotely, we need to include the link in there and how they can actually log in. Votes, so when it comes time where there is a remote or hybrid meeting and it comes time for a vote, those have to be a roll call vote of you as commissioners unless it's a unanimous decision. Remote participants need to at least try to identify themselves before speaking. If there's a connection dropout or some kind of issue, you can postpone from anywhere from 30 minutes to two hours later and reconvene in, in that same remote meeting, or just postpone the meeting altogether to a later date. And then the chairman can call for removal of remote attendees who caused some kind of disorder during the meeting. So those are the main points for just remote or hybrid meetings. Generally, there's, there's three other ones that I just want to point out. I know we're short on time, but these next three requirements apply to regular meetings that are fully remote. So there's no in-person component, there's not hybrid meetings. For fully remote meetings, we also have to comply with these three requirements. If we receive a written request from a member of the public at least 24 hours prior to a fully remote meeting, then the town then, this commission would have to make a physical location available to that individual and provide them essentially with a room and a computer to log into Zoom if for some reason they make the request and they don't have the ability to do so at home. At least that's the intention behind that requirement. In addition, we need to make the recording of our fully remote meeting available and posted online, available to the public, I should say, within seven days of the meeting and keep it up for at least 45 days. And lastly, if for some reason a quorum of this commission is attending remotely, but in the same location, then that cannot be a fully remote meeting and members of the public also have to be allowed in that location. Those, those are really the highlights. I know we're right up on seven o'clock, so I mean, if, if you have any questions, but those are the basics of the new requirements.
All right, you all get that?
Actually, Ira, Nick, thank you. I repeat, Nick, though, I have one other issue I want to quickly discuss because it's something that I observe frequently and I think it'd be important to get your perspective. And that's conditioning special permits and how far a field we go in terms of condition of special permits. For example, let's say there's a special permit to move 10,000 square feet of dirt. And we tell the applicant, being a little extreme here, but can we tell the applicant he cannot paint the house yellow? Where I'm going with this is how much can we, how far a field can we condition a special permit versus just stick to what is the ask in the special permit? See what I'm asking about?
I do, and I, I'll answer that if you want, Ira.
Sure, go ahead. Yeah, please.
The simple answer, John, is that if you can, any condition you impose on a special permit has to be specifically authorized in your regulations. So you can't, so your, your example about painting the house a certain color, unless the regulations say, we can dictate that color of your house if you come in for a special permit with respect to fill. Unless it's in there, unless it's in the regulations, the answer is you cannot do that. You're limited to whatever your regulations would specifically allow in terms of a condition on a special permit. Remember, special permits are administrative. So there are standards in the regulations for those special permits. You either meet them or you don't. I understand public health, safety, welfare is a factor in determining whether a special permit's going to be issued. But there has to be a specific condition set forth in the regs that, that would permit you to do something like that.
Now, Pete, in that case, does the right have to pertain to the specific ask of the special permit?
Well, it has to be, has to be specific enough so that somebody coming in for that special permit would know that that's a possible condition. So it would have to be set forth in the regs in such a way that they would know it's possible that the commission has the authority to impose that kind of commit, that kind of condition on that special permit. Totally different, by the way, for the ZBA in a variance, but you're not the ZBA. So for, for the P and Z, that, that condition has to be authorized in the regulations.
But, I mean, just sticking with that example, you're, you're not likely anywhere to, to see, of course, that kind of unrelated type, you know, authority that would allow you to decide on the color, you know, based on a fill application, you know what I'm saying? So.
Right, right. They're not related, but, but, yeah, but if, if, if the regulation had that provision in it, that's the only time you can impose that condition. So you have to, you have to look to the regulations to see if there's a, if there's a provision in the regulation that, that would authorize that kind of condition.
Great, thank you. So just one brief comment, James Bache. So there's a number of helpful things in this document. And as such, I would hope that this document gets distributed to new members of the commission after there's sworn in. And it's not like, you know, an annual orientation supplement. So I don't know if this document was composed for speaking or not, but I hope it follows that standard for it.
Well, I, I mean, I, I actually did edit, we've used, you know, something like this for, for quite a while, but I, I did try to edit it for tonight's purposes, for New Canons purposes. So there'll be a revised version if you didn't get it. You will use a revised one, because there was one mistake.
No, I was just going to say that I appreciate that, I think it's after someone is sworn in, this document gets sent out. Their introductory documents, I think that would be helpful for new commissioners.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Give it to them, sure.
Stand right, and I know we're tight on time, but just one final question. Again, so digital world we live in, is there anything that prevents us from using any digital devices here in person on the commission for reference points? For example, iMac or iPhones to look up a Google map aerial view of a site application or site during the meeting?
So you're sort of doing your own research, so to speak, during the meeting?
It's, it's a reference point, yeah. For example, the applicant's reference to the five large houses that surround their property and you want aerial view again, you know, a reference point of what they're referring to.
Well, my answer would be, that would be a situation where you should share that somehow with others on the commission and make it part of the record.
So what prevents, what prevents one of the commission members, if they're on the Zoom call, from doing that exact action on their side without anyone knowing that they're doing it?
Yeah, well, nothing, except, you know, if someone finds out about it, it could cause a problem. But it, it's the same theory that if you're relying upon some information, it should become part of the record and, and others, others on the commission should see it. And, and you know, an applicant may want to comment on it or qualify something about it, you know, in theory.
Discussions that you're looking at an image that's, that tells you this, for example?
Yeah, but you, you may see something and you may, and you may be the only one who sees it and it may cause you to vote yes or no. And no one else has the benefit of that information.
Okay, commissioners, any last questions on, if we're here in, in physical questions you're dying to ask? Okay, as always, feel free to follow up with counselors if you have questions, any additional questions? Gentlemen, thank you very much.
Okay, have a good night. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, everybody in the room, as I think you know, I'll be taking everyone into exec session. Good evening. This is Tuesday, August 31st, 2021, regular meeting planning zoning commission. Let's start with, oh, Lynn, let's start with you explaining how you're going around the meeting.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so we're actually running a regular Zoom tonight and everyone's video is shut off except for commissioners. They'll run the same way as we run Zoom entire meetings. If you have a comment and you're on Zoom, please raise your hand during that period of time. If you are a person, please, please raise your hand and then we'll call to the podium.
Lynn, it's Ken Turner. I'm, I'm confused. I thought we had to exit
Yeah.
the current meeting and then go into another Zoom executive session.
You, you will, because you are on the commission, but the regular public will not be part of it.
So Lynn was just introducing the general format of the meeting tonight. I'll do the roll call and then Lynn will take us through what's due on exec session. Okay?
Got it, thanks.
Okay, so roll call, John Goodwin on here, John Chris, Kristen Nielsen.
Here.
Anna Radman here, Clarence Scorni.
Here.
Ken Turner.
Here.
Ward here, Bill Williams here, Roger Cassavan.
Here.
Chris Henry.
Here.
James Bache, here. Okay, executive session at 7:00 PM entering executive session to discuss pending lawsuits, the following matter of a One New Canon Preservation Alliance, KAFLC versus New Canon Planning, zoning commission, and New Canon Library, Inc., number two, Marquitos versus Planning and Zoning, FST 21-6052236 and FST 21-6052429. And Kirk Adal, the Planning and Zoning Commission, FST 21-6052117 and FST 21-6052322. Do I have a motion to go in executive session? Someone, do I have a second? A second? Okay. Now let it be explained, everybody, what, what we're going to do now.
So the commissioners have a separate Zoom ID and they can join us. It's open, our IT department's running.
Yeah, excellent.
Everyone else will be put in a meeting room and this meeting will remain open, but you'll be stuck in a meeting room, so it's a matter of fact session.
So we're logging out and logging back in?
Yes, you have to log, you guys have to log out on Zoom and then log back in, because otherwise you will inadvertently leave the Zoom session open for the public to participate.
And Lynn, is it a separate Zoom link or is it the same Zoom link?
It is a separate Zoom link.
Separate Zoom link?
Yes, that's only given to the I think to put everyone in a meeting room before
So take a couple notes, guys.